Ken, welcome everybody back. Today is March 8. This is our afternoon session. And the first time on our agenda is elected officials report. First one up is June. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm used to saying good morning. Good afternoon. Eliza's back. We're very excited. We actually have two people in our front office all day. I think we'll get caught up now. Very excited about that. The DMVs are going really well. It has worked out really good. Having Cascade open for walk-ins. And having McCall with appointments. Even if they don't get all their appointments filled up, they go out and they generally can find somebody hanging around out in the hallway that's hoping to get in and they help them. So it's been really good. Kathy is actually able to start looking at some reports with this conversion that she hasn't even had a chance to look at yet. So she's feeling much better about things. Hopefully she'll be able to get some of our backlog of reports caught up for us. The appraisers are doing a great job. We are still just moving right along. They're actually getting permits in order to try to head out into the field a little bit to do some Springfielding before we do finalize our assessment roll. That's something that we... Pardon?
When will you have that value? Remember last year coming in a policy increase, when will you have that information?
Oh, probably in April. We're still, we are ahead of the game, but we're going to really fine tune things this year to make sure that we're quite solid in our values because there are going to be some substantial increases. Yeah, I just got a sale in for bare land in a local subdivision and we increased the value up to about a hundred thousand and it sold in January for a hundred and seventy-five.
There are zero lots. I looked all week.
I...
Zero.
That's the problem. There is no inventory. And it's just driving things crazy. So I am planning when we finish our values and I can bring you that information. I'm going to do something this year that I haven't done before. But I think it's necessary to do. I'm going to send a letter with our assessment notices. I've hesitated to do that because they do charge us extra to do that. I think this is the year that we need to do it. We've always published the letter online and I've always provided a copy of it to the newspaper. But I think this year we'll do all three. We will publish it, we will give it to the newspaper, but I'm also going to have it enclosed with the assessment notices to give an explanation of what's happening in our county. And we hope that'll, that'll help somewhat.
Everyone should know, but...
They should, but we're gonna, we're going to do that, so. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, I just wanted to state, as long as you leave the old farmers alone, I think we'll be all right.
Okay. Okay, I would like to say one thing. I would like to thank each and every one of you for everything that you have done for all of us, for the employees and for our community this past year. It's been not fun. We've never ever experienced anything like this. We were all trying to learn as we went. And I thank you very much for everything that you have done for us.
It's appreciated.
Thank you.
It's definitely been a challenge, but I think we...
Yes, it has. I think we will.
Thank you for saying that. We've all worked together as a team. That's the bottom line.
We have. We have.
We needed teamwork.
It goes both ways, for sure.
It has brought my department a lot closer. It's, it's, there's always good with bad, so. So thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Miller?
I mean, tell you something.
What do they call you? Chief Cook and Bottle Washer?
Good afternoon, commissioners.
That's our title.
Just to give you a brief update regarding election preparation, we are finalizing our preparation today. We are going out to all of the polling locations and setting up, so we will be ready for the election tomorrow. Again, it's the Cascade supplemental levy and then McCalle, Cascade School supplemental levy and the McCall-Donley school bond or refinancing of the existing bond. So we are prepared. We are just finalizing the polling locations today. The polls will open up at eight in the morning and close at eight PM.
Can everybody get out and vote?
Doug, what percentage do they need to pass?
The super majority is for the McCall-Donley and then they just need a simple majority for the supplemental levy in Cascade.
Thank you.
Good.
We are following Senate Bill 1108 quite closely. That is regarding property taxes and the levy. Tim Hibbard with Idaho Association of Counties has submitted a spreadsheet. It's basically a calculator so taxing districts can gauge where they'll be able to levy. I haven't had the full opportunity to take a close look at it and implement or input our figures from last fiscal year for fiscal year 2021, but I will be working on that hopefully on Wednesday and provide the commissioners with a brief update of what the Senate Bill 1108 is going to look like and what it's going to, how it's going to impact Valley County. So again, I'll be working on that this week utilizing the calculator that's been provided by Tim Hibbard with Idaho Association of Counties.
What, is that bill been introduced yet?
My understanding it has been introduced and I think it's had a hearing.
And I loved it because Tim found a problem with the calculator and changed it. So originally the legislation was off.
Correct.
Because of that calculator.
So we're going to be monitoring that closely. We're going to be implementing or inputting our numbers just to kind of gauge again where we will be at. But again, I would request that the commissioners monitor that bill closely.
And then tomorrow is the health district bill. To Doug, where the state's pulling all that funding for health districts, that's being introduced tomorrow.
Okay. We, the clerk's office will be sending out the notices to the taxing districts here within the next couple of weeks informing them that we need to know their budget hearing dates. So if the commissioners can also keep that in mind that Valley County as well as Valley County EMS also has to set their budget hearing date. Our office was looking at August 24th. If you guys would take a look and see if that date would be acceptable, then we will put that on the agenda for the commissioners to approve the budget hearing date of August 24th for the public hearing. And again, just to reiterate, we will also be sending out the letters to the taxing districts that we need their budget hearing dates no later than April 30th of 2021 is when they have to have those notifications to my office. Then those notifications go to the assessor's office and then the assessor's office puts those out on the assessment notices.
So Doug, that's Tuesday. So you mean the 23rd?
It's the 23rd. My apologies. I thought it was the 24th. Okay, so no, August 23rd is what we were looking at. Exciting news. Officially, Adam Judge, Judge Adam DeGildine was sworn in on Friday. We had a nice ceremony, all virtual ceremony for him, but he, his first day on the bench was today. And he's hitting the ground running. So we do have officially have our new judge in place. And we are excited to have him. Again, we'll just continue to keep the commissioners aware of any jury trials. But right now, the prosecuting attorney office will probably provide you with an update, but there are a few trials that are set. The clerk's office, court clerks are extremely ready for those to move forward if that, if those cases do in fact move forward to a jury trial.
Well, he sure had good comments. Feel blessed to have him here after hearing.
He had some very good positive comments from people around the state. So that's really nice to hear that we did receive a great individual to represent and to sit on the bench in Valley County.
Yeah, I'm excited. And I think, you know, Brian's going to let us know. Trials are coming up, but in the meantime, we might want to check all the IT stuff up there and make sure that he has what he needs.
We have. Again, yeah, thank you for pointing that out. I'd like to express a great appreciation to our local IT departments. They have been nothing but bent over backwards for myself, for the judge. He is fully set up. I think there's just maybe one item that we need to get fixed for him. But yes, he is definitely set up. To share with the commissioners, we're also looking with, working with the IT department to potentially move away from life size. That is the program that we're currently utilizing in the courtroom for virtual hearings. But there has been some concerns, some complaints about this, the program that we have used. So we are looking at potentially going to teams. And we're hoping within the next couple of months, we potentially will make a full transition to something other than life size. But again, yes, thank you, local IT department for, again, their service to us.
Okay. Any questions for Doug?
Thank you.
Prosecutor, Mr. Dogg. Looking pretty chipper today.
Afternoon. Well, I'm chipper just about every day. I don't have a whole lot new to report. I can say that Oki and I are not bored. You guys have been kind enough to take advantage of having Mr. Oki here and his expertise in the civil stuff has been a huge help. His whiteboard is just about full right now. And so after a couple of weeks on the job, it's, it's good to see that the county's certainly getting their money's worth out of Brian. He's doing a great job and working hard. I'm staying, of course, very busy on the criminal side. We'll start jury trials again next week. I've got one set next week. You know, I don't know for sure whether it's going to go or not yet. But I'm ready and the state will be ready to go if it does go next week. And then we have, you know, progressively more jury trials set over the next couple of months. You know, we, we've got a couple set in April. We'll have more set in May and the further we go on, there's, there's kind of a backlog from all those cases that couldn't be tried over the last six or seven months. So we'll see an increase in those. A lot of the misdemeanor cases we'll try to handle by mediation if we can. That's kind of an idea that's been thrown out there to try to mediate those without the need for a jury trial. And so we'll give that a shot. I think there's a possibility that Ada County may be willing to provide us a district judge to handle some of those mediations. In the meantime, I'll be working hard to try to get some of those cases settled if we can. If we can't, then we'll set them for trial and we'll try. And so that, you know, that's just part of the criminal process. So we'll be working hard on that over the next few months. There'll be a lot of, a lot of preparation for trial over the next few months, but we're, we're all set to handle it and, and we should be fine. I don't see any major, you know, issues with the, with the criminal caseload over the next few months, other than it is, you know, with, with that backlog, it's, it's heavy. I mean, it's, it's a heavy, heavy load. I know Brian's been working a little bit on maybe working with the road maintenance folks and the, the new advisory group that Commissioner Mopin's put together. And Brian will be kind of help, helping with advising that group on getting a good, solid road maintenance policy put in place so that we can avoid some of the conflicts that have happened over the, over this last year and the last couple of months, especially with all the snow we've had. And so I know Brian's going to be working closely with that on, as well as the other projects he has, but but yeah, we are, we're staying very busy and we're all, all of our support staff is up and running full time and and we're, we're hanging in there. We're, we're trying to stay on the treadmill. Happy to answer any questions if you got them. No, we're happy to have Judge DeGildine aboard. You know, it's really, it's really nice to, I've known Judge DeGildine for a lot of years. He was a Boise City prosecutor for a long time. And while I was an Ada County prosecutor, and so we saw each other work for quite a few years there and we're going to be real happy with Judge DeGildine. He's a real measured guy. He's not, not one that's prone to panic. The kind of disposition you like to see on the bench, somebody that's going to keep calm, that's not going to make rash decisions. It's going to be real thoughtful and real careful about what he says and what he does. And so he'll be a great addition to the community and, and to the bench for us. So we're, we're really happy to have him on board and happy to have, you know, we've really appreciated all of the visiting judges and the retired judges that have jumped in to help us out over the last several months. But it'll be nice to have, have one judge and not, you know, that sometimes there's some, you never know what you're going to get, you know, and it's not a bad thing. It's just some of the judges across the state have different ways of doing things from where they come from as opposed to what we're used to doing here. And it'll be nice to just have a nice, consistent approach with Judge DeGildine on the bench. So we're, we're looking forward to that.
Because housing, right?
Yeah, I, I think he has, he does have some temporary housing and I don't think he's, I don't think he's hurting for that. He'll, he'll he'll at least be fine until it's warm enough to sleep in a tent this summer and then he'll be fine.
And hopefully you'll be doing jury trials and all that by summer, so you can do a little more fishing and get some of that stuff that...
Yeah, yeah. I don't think I'll, I don't think I'll be fishing for a while, but I, I, I'm going to be, I'm going to be pretty busy for a while, but that's okay. It's, there's going to be, there's going to be some heavy lifting up front here, but that's all right. I'm always better busy than bored, I always say, so.
All right. Good news.
Thanks, you guys.
Uh, let's see. Sheriff's not here. Treasurer, Dave, are you online?
Yes, sir.
Hey, welcome. How are you?
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, hear you great.
I'm hanging in there.
Good.
Yeah, good. Well, good afternoon, commissioners and Clerk Miller. I first want to, I know you, you're aware I've been out of the office with some illness. Want to thank you for the card that you sent. I really appreciated that. Like to report that our current parcels and tax deed are fifty-eight. And we'll be ordering title searches next week on those. We're still searching for a new deputy treasurer. Is that one, one interview and not very many applications coming in? But hoping to, hoping to get some more applications for that. Things are, things are running smooth in the office. The ladies have done a great job in my absence. I've been working remotely some. I do expect to be back in office later in the week.
Good news, Ken. That'll be awesome. Okay.
All right.
Any questions, Ken?
That's all I've got.
All right, well, take care of yourself and we'll see you maybe towards the end of the week.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Annette. Good afternoon. That's a weird...
I know. You guys really threw me today. Anyway, Tony passes tests, so he is commercial. Marcia will be taking her test sometime this week. I just haven't set it up yet. And that's for permit technician to get certified.
Did you get him a donut? Say congratulations.
No, I'll have to do that. We're getting lots of phone calls. Information on the permits. Got twenty-four issued, fourteen waiting to be picked up. Five in my office. There's a couple in Cindy's office, so we're, we're moving right along. We're still trying to take care of the shed issue, which will be an ongoing thing. Yeah, so we're just getting ready for summer. That's about all I got.
So Tony, now a commercial inspector? And then where are you on the plan inspection? You're done with that, aren't you?
The plan, I can do residential. I'm working on the commercial. I'm hoping to do that within the next month. Take the test. I gotta get it. It's air.
I can do great.
Residential. Okay, any questions for Annette? All right.
Okay.
Good. Stay safe. Skip, are you online?
He's actually here in the office, Mr. Chairman. I think he is just meeting with Alicia Baptiste with Department of Juvenile Corrections.
Oh, okay.
And I think both of them will be speaker at two o'clock.
Oh, okay. Melissa, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, your turn.
So I'm going to start by reporting out the four H's. For the after-school programming with major states in Cascade and the after-school programming in Donley are continuing to move forward and there's some creative inventive things happening in that major states world. And so that's exciting to have Rebecca and then Annabelle plug into the Donley programming. Allison has new clubs that are forming or she's working with onboarding the leaders. There's sewing clubs and there's shooting sports clubs. And then she's continuing to meet with those leaders monthly at our leaders council and continues partnering work with the Fair Board. I, for my programming, have wrapped up the diversity learning circle effort. And I am working on some bulletins. I'm working with MacDUP, which is a national community development, third-generation professionals in ongoing conference planning. And there'll be a virtual conference in May, and so helping to plan for that event. I am working on trying to wrap up some evaluations with some programming that's already happened and some impact statements. And I will be generating some monthly reports and I'll send those to you via email. Working, I'm getting some web updates with Canvas. And have recently presented to the Moss graduate students some program planning. Did a virtual conference with SISIS Institute, which was the first year that was virtual. And that was a great success. There was a lot of Idaho workers in teaching at that virtual conference. There was four extended speakers around the street. There was Miss Purse tribe and there was a lot of Idaho Department of Land. And so that was nice to be able to offer that training and have such like really, really good Idaho representation in that virtual format. I'm going to be doing a follow-up question. What does it look like to do collaboration in like a blended collaborative atmosphere, which would just be working part-time virtual and part-time in person? And that'll be this week on Thursday. And then continuing to move forward with a peer learning network, which is statewide discussion. And I have local people plugged into that effort. And I did a topic survey, so we'll be going over the priority areas of interest. Because when staying with that group and doing more informal networking and ID exchange. And then I'm working with Advanced Master Gardens and they have their mushroom projects underway. And then I have AmeriCorps mid-member feedback, sorry, laundry list. I'm wrapping up. Do you have any questions for me?
Melissa, have you heard about a new group forming in Cascade? It's called the Planet Youth Working Group?
The Planet Youth?
Planet Youth Working Group, yeah.
I have not, but I contacted with Allison. She goes with the Yak Youth Advisory Committee. And so they are all networked with different youth-focused programs and so it's beauty. Even if I'm not aware, I imagine Allison's probably aware.
You might, you might contact Shawna. Shawna's the one that's kind of putting it together. She wants me on there too. It's kind of a, I would assume when I'm just guessing, you're a pre-Yak group that's forming for the youth down in Cascade. So thought maybe you might want to be involved or at least know about it. All right.
Thank you.
Any questions for Melissa? This is going great. And we're going to go back to Skip. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Commissioner, sorry about that. I was meeting with Alicia and I lost track of time.
No problem.
I'm going to be meeting with you later on today, so most of the conversation I'll save for that. But just wanted to give you a few updates with V-Corp. That's moving right along. We've already done our first and now working on our second report that we sent to the feds for the grant funding. I'm impressed with, despite the setbacks with COVID and the gathering, things happen, but they've done a couple of trainings that we've gotten finished up for the community. They're setting up again for the drug takeback this year, which I believe will happen in June, I think. Teresa Fanslow, which isn't exactly V-Corp, she's been working with the schools and setting up a coaching program for kids, which she's working with our program with BD and also with Yak. And we did our very first one, she did her very first one yesterday with one of our clients, her juvenile clients, teaching them life skills and coaching. And I think that's going to be really meaningful program. Outside of that, we're still looking forward to kind of getting back to normal and trying to figure out how we're going to do the outreaches to people other than just doing a video, talking about pamphlets, maybe business cards. Talked about doing stickers or something that could leave in hotel rooms. So they're working on that, but it's not an easy solution. I'm trying to figure out how to reach people when you can't reach them.
Executive Director, so many that's actually in the office kind of here.
Yeah, so Cheryl Hilt, I'm, I can double check her E, her name. I'm sorry. Yeah, she's the executive director. So she's actually an employee for Central District Health and she's the executive director for that. And then for The Rock, they've hired one coaching so far, one person that's up here that can be a peer coach, peer recovery coach. They're still covering most of the positions and the needs from the peer coaches that live down in the valley for the clients up here. But they're still seeking those, those recovery coaches that actually live here in Valley County. Yak is also in the office with The Rock. And Sylvia, Ryan is in there along with Shannon McKnight. And even though that is the Yak, it's, it's a corporation, you know, they, they work together, they help each other out. And so there's been a lot of resources and referrals that Monica's told me about. And they just haven't been able to fill quite the need with finding somebody local. So they do need peer recovery coaches that live here in Valley County. And they can do it part-time, they could do it full-time, they could do it as a volunteer. So anybody that, you know, would like to help people work through their recovery, it's not treatment, it's support. We'd appreciate them looking into it.
Well, I know when we first started V-Corp before it was really online, there was a concern about substance abuse counselors. And so we did kind of a rough survey of folks up here. I'd heard upwards of seventeen different counselors that were retired that were available. And I don't know where that list went or if it's still online, but I think there's one or two for adult, for adult substance abuse issues. But I think that might be something you guys want to think about, is get that list together and so folks can call them. You're only as comfortable as the person you're talking to and something just don't match, so. That was one of the things we did when I was on the mental health board, trying to put the, that list of those folks out in the public so people can, they can call and get help.
And I appreciate, and that's, that's a really good thought. It's important. I mean, traditionally in Valley County, we've had one treatment provider. I mean, up until recently, we've had one. And when they quit or leave, we've been just hustling. And plus, just like you're saying, I mean, if you have one person that goes in there and one treatment provider, if they're not a good match, it's ineffective counseling. So I appreciate that. That's something to keep in mind. I know that right now we have two between the Change Clinic in Donley and then CIC in McCall. But having more resources with that, I think would be valuable.
Radio or something of folks that are retired that might be interested in coming back part-time so we can build that list that are up there. Because I know there's quite a few. Just somebody to reach those folks that are in the woods that maybe want to come up house for a while.
I'll mention that in the V-Corp agenda. And like I said, I do think it'd be valuable. I think it'd be useful, so.
Skip, who's managing that grant?
So the, the money facilitator now is Central District Health. So they're the financial responsible party. Getting back to what you just said though about a list, I know Echo Idaho, so Yak could put together a provider list. that was pretty expensive. And Echo Idaho has since worked with them and is expanding that. So, there might be part of what you said, Commissioner Hasbrook, that's in there, but I'm not sure yet. They're gonna be finishing that up. And actually wanted to see if we could get that link and put it somewhere on the Valley County website. Somewhere to say, hey, if you need, here's a link of resources. I don't know where that would go, but I'm sure somebody could figure it out. Somebody's looking for some mental health or substance abuse health.
Well, we've got some retired folks that just want to work a couple of hours a week.
Right.
Just for, you know, not gonna say the word, but it's some giggles just for, you know, for fun or even to make a little money. I think it's good to find out who those folks are.
Well, excuse me, I'll certainly mention it in our next meeting, I think, which is Wednesday at 3:30.
Be great on the chambers too.
For the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, for all the chambers. Because people, when they move to an area, they go to the Chamber of Commerce websites first normally.
That's right.
First services, so.
And you might talk to some of the providers at the hospitals. They may know folks that we don't know about too that used to do this.
And that work might be done, and I just don't know about it, but I'll follow up with it and all.
It's all been done, but nobody has the list. Where's, how do we get this out to the public so that somebody needs help, they can get on the list to start calling? Putting two and two together really.
Yep.
Any more questions for Skip?
I'm sorry, I haven't met a people.
We'll see you soon.
Keep trying. I really do.
Pat, are you on the phone? Hello, Pat?
No, I don't think she was working.
She's in Apple. I am.
Yeah, I don't think she was working today though.
Okay, next one up by T. Jeremy. How's your day?
Got no questions? So, for IT department, we saw some people working from home. We have enough space in there to socially distance if we need to be in there together to work. We did that last week and the week before. We had to update the sheriff's MDTs. So, we're all in there to get that done. There's a lot of them. There's a lot of work. But the space is big enough that we can still stay apart. The big projects we're working on, full steam ahead right now, are the Spielman project. You get that up and going? The training for CAD is this week. I'm sorry, for the officers is this week, the officer training. And the fire folks are gonna be training next week. And Go Live is still looking like we're gonna be good for the beginning of April. So, it's looking all right. And the new website, the layouts are almost all finalized. The court side is done, it sounds like. The sheriff's side, they're still working on some of the things, but the company is working on getting that up and ready and going. And so, hopefully soon here we can transition to our new website. Aside from that, we're just trying to work through the tickets as they come in and keep everything going and keep as many people happy as we can. I did want to touch on real briefly. I was listening earlier in that Donley Fire Department agreement. I had sent that to them some weeks ago and their IT person reached out to me last week and asked them a couple of questions. It didn't sound like at that time that they were ready to move forward. It sounded like they were still working some things out. So, they haven't reached back out to me to say like what devices or how they've, what they've done or how they're complying with their policies. So, I just want to make you aware of that. If it is gonna be on the agenda next week, I haven't had any discussions with them to finalize to make sure that they were, whatever devices they were using are gonna be in compliance with that, with that policy that you had signed.
So, like you said, we put it on the agenda next week. If you want to work that up between now and then, we just got the standard release form, so.
Yeah, I'll try and reach out to them this week and make sure that they understand everything and are in compliance with everything.
The other question I had, Jeremy, was, I know one time we talked about changing our domain name. Is that still in process?
It is. I don't know what happened to it. I know that we registered and were approved for a .gov domain. So, I know we own that. I'm 99% sure that we own that and it's, we were approved and we have it. Actually, moving from Code ID Valley or Code ID to ID.us to that domain, I don't know where in the works that is, but I can follow up and find out if anything further was done with it or if it just kind of stalled out. And if it did, then we can get it back going again.
I just wanted to bring up, make sure you have that in the corner of the back of your movie.
Okay.
Okay.
Jeremy, on that, so on those agreements, I remember one coming true from them called Police Department where they had written policy. And we agreed with their policy. And I think we did the same thing with Cascade, right? So, they need to provide us the policy then that they are following to make sure that it integrates. Is that correct?
Correct.
Not just a signature.
Yeah, so it's not just a signature on the agreement. The agreement stipulates that they have to either follow our policy or have policy in place that meets or exceeds our policy.
I think I would let one know that just so that they can build that. Sounds like a lot more work than just doing it in a file.
Correct, yes, it is.
They should be able to get it from either Cascade or McCall though. They should all be running basically the same thing.
We would not sign this until we get your approval.
Correct.
Good. Anything else?
The only thing I'm gonna tell you is that computer doesn't work with the projector. Doesn't have the right audio on it or whatever. We have to change mine to a different audio source and that one doesn't have it.
Okay.
So, remember that when the guys come.
All right, I'll look at it.
Thank you.
Jeremy? Sunda?
So, I sat in on the fire working group meeting. It was last week or the week before. And I've asked the fire chiefs to develop some sort of standard list for subdivisions and shared driveways across the three different fire districts so that, you know, you're not traveling and, you know, between districts. They said that they would be working on that for me. Watched the Citizens Planning Academy being put on by Idaho Smart Growth. It's the first Wednesday of every month. It starts at like 6:00 PM at night. I mean, it was pretty interesting, this last one. I know Sherry was on also and, you know, I got some great tidbits out of it and we might want to utilize some of that. But it was on Local Land Youth Planning Act and, you know, how planning started and different techniques, different communities do throughout the country on how to save farmlands and open spaces and that type of thing. And they will be recording them if you want to watch them at a different time. It was very interesting.
Could you send us the link to that as well?
Sure.
She did.
I did.
For the last one. So, you should have a link on there.
I, yeah, okay. I participated in the Valley Soil Water Conservation District meeting last Thursday because we wanted Christina Kretur and the Valley County Waterways Management Plan. We introduced ourselves in that. And I did remind them that any work, no matter what it is, in a floodplain requires a permit. And I was able to answer any of their questions about our proposed floodplain ordinance. I think that they were satisfied with that response. And we have lots of new applications. And I don't know what happened with House Bill 197. I think.
It was shoved in a drawer.
I hope it was. Yeah, that was not a good one. And I would say that, you know, Brian Oki has been an extremely good help. And he's just totally jumping into planning and zoning. And those issues that we need assistance with, with prosecution and some of that types of stuff. So, we're gonna get together a plan and he's been extremely helpful.
Awesome. That's good to hear.
What did Boss say earlier? They were earning their pay right now or something?
Yeah. Right, yeah, he's, actually is doing things for us. Yay. So, any questions for me?
So, is there any big subdivision coming online? Have you heard anything with lots of lots?
No. Biggest one I have right now is 16. I've got a 13. I have a six.
Using lots or 16?
Lots.
16 and 13?
16 lots. I have a 13.
I've got another 25.
And a six. Yeah, there's nothing. Nothing like we need.
Those could have sold last weekend.
You know, there's still stuff coming down the pipeline. It's important.
I have conversations set up in the near future with some larger developments that I'm pretty excited to, you know, to get going. But right now, everything is just small.
16 lots isn't small, or it's not big, but it's not small.
Yeah, it's actually 16 lots in, it's called Aspen Ridge in the Tamarack site itself. And then the six lot one is at the top of Tamarack. So, those will be a special group. The 13 lot one is up off Moon Ridge on some of that DeBora property. And then I have a three lot one over off the highway on some of that property. But nothing big coming yet.
There's lots of big ones that's going on, so maybe something will come down the line.
So, the Lupa training was very interesting for that. We've got, you know, I mean, we do need to have a long-term planning conversation about where we would like to see growth and where we want to see agriculture remain. Because that's, you gotta be ahead of what some of this stuff is. And we're 10 years behind probably.
Well, I don't, the Citizens Planning Academy is put on by Idaho Smart Growth. And they like to see high density in urban areas. And they want those no growth boundaries and preservation of ag lands. They want it zoned agricultural for now and forever. Exactly. Yeah. So, that is the conversation. I mean, at what point does it get changed?
Or just that we look at the conversation so we know, you know, a little bit more. And there are tools out there in order to help both the farmers and create preservation opportunities. So, we need to take advantage of some of that while we still can.
Well, I can tell you, just keep eating beans and you'll have lots of guys over there.
That's right.
You can count on me.
Hey, any more questions for Sunda? All right, have a safe day. Mr. Luxon?
Good afternoon. Oh, I've been busy. H229 will be heard tomorrow by the Senate Transportation Committee. Thank you for responding on that email. We need to get as many comments to them as possible leaning in our direction, but we still need to push as hard as we can.
Four different guys that I knew, senators I knew, I support letter, crab tree, some of those guys, so.
Good. I have a pretty, if we can get all four pieces of legislation through, that'll be when we were told when we started this thing, oh, you guys don't get anything through. So, that would be a pretty good deal. The Cascade cat, as you know, the head was gone out of that and that shipped on March 22nd, Federal Express overnight. It showed up the 5th.
February, I heard you on your March 5th.
Yeah, that was overnight freight. And that's what overnight freight with FedEx is doing right now. That's shipped February 22nd, yeah.
So, was that the large expense that I saw?
That grew on?
No, that was the, that was the final drive that went to the Piston Bully up north. And I just sent the bill into IDPR. They said they would give us, pay us back 50% of that. So, that'll help out quite a bit. No, no, they're not gonna give us that one, unfortunately, that. I don't think so. It'll be a little bit less than that. Yeah, I'm still concerned. I'm gonna be over there tomorrow when he's working. I got a little camera with this thing to go into the exhaust manifold. We only found one little chunk of that exhaust valve. So, and it's gotta be there someplace. I'm hoping it's embedded in the sleeve. And little bits of it are embedded in the piston. But there's a chance, talking to Eddie and a few other people around the state, that there's a chunk sitting up in that exhaust manifold just ready to go into the turbo. And that's, that would be an expense that we can't have. We've got all sorts of things that are going into there, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I attended, I went to the Idaho State Snowville Association State Ride this weekend in Stanley and talked to them about, I didn't ride, I can't put a helmet on yet, but I went up there and talked to them about legislation. And the biggest comments that came up were about enforcement. And that was actually a pretty good learning experience for me. A lot of, a lot of the rural counties don't have any people to do enforcement. They've got a few deputies and at best, and they can't do it. So, we're gonna start, we're gonna get a committee together, start thinking out of the box. How do we help enforcement all around the state? And I'm kind of looking forward to that. And then the big news that came out of that, as you know, we have a new club in Valley County called the Worm Lake Riders. And their first year, they have 63 members. And they have, they have asked and will receive, they're gonna do the state ride here next year. And that's good timing, yeah. It's been, what, eight to 10 years since we've had it in Valley County. I enjoy doing that stuff, bringing it, bringing stuff back home. Three of our guys are off, as you know, Scott Heard, Chris Coburns and Scott Hutchins. So, now we're really down five people, but the timing's pretty good on it. Francie Wallace Parking Lot, the hydrologist's report came back. And it's mostly favorable. There's a little more than a half an acre in there that would probably be declared wetlands. But it's small enough that we're submitting to the Corps of Engineers now. And Corps of Engineers may, is small enough, they may just ignore that. So, we're hoping that, that would, that would almost double the size of Francie Wallace Parking Lot. It would be kind of a pie shape is what it would be down there, but that would definitely help out. Been really going through numbers as Doug, as Commissioner Miller knows, I've been kind of the budget has been bothering me lately because I, we've never been really close to running out. And we're a little close, but not as bad as I thought. John Hicks and I went through, spent about six hours just crunching numbers last week. And now, we're not, because remember, our, the budget that we build isn't the actual funds that we, that we get because we don't have numbers. Now, for the first time ever, we're gonna have IDPR numbers. So, right now, as of today, our numbers are showing in the McCall area, we're up 100, or excuse me, 801 registrations. In Cascade, we're down 29 registrations. Worm Lake's up 56 and Cougar Mountain's up 58 for a total increase of 886 registrations, which is gonna add up to around $24,000 more next year than this year. The interesting thing is, is I just playing the numbers game, I took the money that we, if legislation goes through and the increase on out-of-staters, that increase would be just around $84,000. And that's, we're pushing really hard because there's a lot of areas that do get out-of-staters and don't have a lot of residents. It's a probably, because in-state's down. All through the state, residence is way down. It's difficult for them to get it, you know? The IDPR made it very difficult for people to get a sticker this year. One of our legislations will make it a lot easier. And I think that's gonna fly through. So, all in all, it's, things are looking good for next year. Get this year finished off. We've, we're gonna, one of the preno's will go away. We're getting a new groomer every year for four years. And depending on, if we ever get enough hours on the Smiths Berry Cat, well, it'll be a new one every year for five years. We're gonna, well, cat, I'm sorry, cat's a preno. We would like to go to, we'd like to go to Piston Bully and have everything the same. That way, as we order filters in, as we order parts in, and the stuff that breaks all the time, we can have one central area for all our, all our parts and pieces rather than having a preno and a Piston Bully. And preno's just aren't standing up to what we do.
By America?
It's by America. No, the only one there is, is Tucker. And Tuckers have a rubber track and they, they're made in Oregon. They would slide off the mountain up here. So, the only reason we have to, is when we do, some of our cats come, or, sorry, our groomers come from the RTP program, which is a federal grant program. That's the one we have to make. So, they do one on that and then they do two on other, on other grant, state grant programs. And we don't have to follow the Made in America on the state grant programs.
Really?
Yeah. It's difficult. I will tell you that my, one of the concerns that all the people that run the grooming programs around the state are having right now. The last turbo for a Piston Bully was purchased by Brundage and there's no more here. Their stuff isn't getting shipped out of Italy or Germany. It's preno's Italian. The Piston Bully's German and parts and pieces are getting quite rare. We're playing a lot of games, working with aftermarket people to see if there's a way to retrofit some of this stuff.
What's a new PB cost?
$310,000. Three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Last one we purchased was two hundred and forty with, uh, with the tiller. And, yeah, it's, uh,
How many years does that get, based on our government program?
All depends on the area. Those prenoths are only three years old, and, uh, the one prenoth got, will have about forty-one hundred hours on it. Yeah, yeah. And we kinda pushed that, to be honest with you, because it gets a lot of miles.
And do we need to keep those when they upgrade them? Do we keep the old equipment?
I wish, no. They trade them in, and, uh, that's, next year's legislation is, right now, IDPR doesn't have a choice but use them as a trade. And we're, we would like to stop that, to where if some of the grooming programs would like to purchase it for the value of the trading, because one, one year, we had a PB two-hundred that traded in at forty thousand dollars. And Piston Bully went out and sold that thing for almost a hundred thousand dollars. And that would be the type of thing we could put a, we could put a, one over at Worm Lake, since we get a building built and get some property. But, uh, that would be something that would help all the grooming programs be able to purchase that equipment.
Spend some time on that report from Curtis on parking lots and where they need to be expanded. Would there, is it time to hold a summit, a recreation summit? And invite all of the, the recreation programs throughout the area and talk about the expansion of our program? You think it's time to do that, or?
Well, you know, I was talking to Cindy about that this morning a little bit. Because since Curtis wrote that, a lot of things have changed. You know, DF Development has come in, they've sold a lot of the Patty Flats ground, and there's a bunch of other large chunks that are gonna sell off. I think we need to hear back from, uh, from DF Development where we're going, and as soon as we have that information, because that'll make a big difference. I mean, if they give us Kinley Crick or some of this other stuff, that's where we want our parking lots. But until they give it to us, it doesn't do us any good.
Just sidebar, Jenny Blake from Forests, or strangers, reached out to a group of folks, including I know, some other entities, and said she would like to facilitate or help facilitate that conversation.
Oh, good.
And I think the, the majority of the folks said, hey, can we do that, like, starting this summer, next fall?
That would probably be good timing. Yeah, and we're having a meeting with Erin on, uh, on Titus. I think it's next Thursday. We're gonna meet her up there and talk about enlarging the Titus parking lot at the same time. Talk about Wall, Wallace Lane's a real important one to ease some of our congestion, because it moves people quite a ways away from where they are right now, and that, that would help us out a lot.
Is that the one in Adams County?
It's in New Meadows, yeah, yeah.
I talked to Mark Woods on Friday, and Mark said that you guys were gonna try and, you know, if we could work collaboratively with the Adams County Commissioners. So I don't have any problems going talking to them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we work a lot with Adams, and I do a report to Adams County every year. Jim County, I just sent them a couple emails, and they're happy, and Idaho County, do they take email in Idaho County? No, no.
They do, I think, but it's quite worth.
Yes, yes.
Have you gotten in contact with Jimmy at all at the, uh?
No, that's what I was talking to, uh, um, we were talking about it earlier, we haven't heard anything, because everything was on hold because of COVID. But I think, I think it's time for us to move forward and and get ahold of them and try to get get things moving, let them know it's time to move things on. So I get a lot of questions about that. I I would like to do that, if that's all right with you guys.
I think I would bump them a little and see where we are, just reminded that we're still here.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where we're going.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? We're gonna get that grant program going. Excited about that. Yeah, it really is shocking. I, I, I think when this legislation is done, it's gonna be time to have a little bit of a yahoo. The Stanley thing was great, by the way, it's, uh, it was worth going. And I, I, you know, I don't charge the county for that. No, I went over the top. They opened it up, yeah. But while I was coming back, I was looking to the left where it drops into that crick, and there was a slide that came down right there, and I'm like, I kinda went a little faster. Get the heck out of that, because that, it makes you nervous, even during the summer, you get a little nervous in there. Yes. Oh, my, yeah, how would you like to work for the road crew that has to take care of that? Anyway, thank you, guys. How's it going?
Thanks for all the hard work.
It's fun.
We're getting there this year.
Jeff, you're up, mister.
Mister, ooh, you're in trouble.
It was nice and quiet. My phone had a few people call me, but nothing major. First of all, the new motor we put in our little An international truck, the one we lost the motor in last, beginning of plow season. Got Oki in on this also, just in case we have problems. We're gonna pull it out and send it back. The reason we bought the rebuilt motor, which they call a trimmed engine, is because it comes with, it's pretty much ready to drop in and use. We dropped it in, drove it to Donley and back, front crank seal was leaking. That was the start of it. Pulled the radiator back out, brand-new radiator, brand-new oil cooler, brand-new turbo, all this other stuff we put on it. When got ready to put things back together, one of my newer mechanics noticed in the burp tank for the radiator, there was silicone in there and a lot of rust. So did they really rebuild this motor? Our mobile mechanic that we rely a lot on out of the valley said, take that motor out and send it back. So I've got so I've got Oki kind of on the kind of got him going on what's happening in case we have issues.
You are a busy guy.
Which we will, because this has been a fight since day one. Larry even said it, we've got it took two weeks to get apart from Lewiston to here on FedEx. Overnight, two weeks. I've got a clutch sitting down here waiting to go back on FedEx, been sitting there for almost three weeks.
Somebody's probably waiting for it somewhere, huh?
Who knows? Of course, everybody's blaming everything on COVID, so it might be part of it, but we see FedEx at our shop almost every day, but nobody stops to pick that up. That's the big thing going on right now, Stretch is in the process right now, pulling that motor back out. And it's gonna go back on the engine stand, and the reason we went with the trim motor was because we didn't have time to rebuild the, the old one. Is it, you know, three, four weeks, we was thinking, get a trim motor, drop it in, go back to work. Truck's still not running, hasn't most of the winter.
How much time is it involved taking, putting that thing in, taking it out?
Uh, there's probably it's not bad now, I think Stretch can do it with his eyes closed, but it, it's, it's at least, at least a day, if not more, with probably two guys working on it, so
Dreams about it every night.
Yeah, yeah, so, but now we're winters hopefully over. Uh, few storms here and there, but we're gonna probably have the, our mobile mechanic rebuild that block for us. So we still don't have time to rebuild it, we're still way too busy, so we'll just give him the old original core, which is still good. He'll take it to Boise, rebuild it on his own time, and give us a warranty on it. So it'll be cheaper if I can get my fourteen thousand dollars back out of this other motor without a fight, but it, it'll be a, it'll be a challenge. Other than that, we're, uh, kind of in switching over to spring mode. A lot of pat, a lot of patching going on. Uh, everything's still buried in the snow right now, can't even get to them. It'll be another two or three weeks before we start seeing water issues. Yep, trying Yep, trying to get that ice, get that snow pushed back, so the water will get off the road, and we're getting a lot of phone calls on the highway down here already. I put my two cents in worth ITD last week. Well, I don't know if you guys drive south of Kirk Creek, but next week, they're gonna start hauling heavy loads on it.
Are they coming over Herrick Hill?
No, no, it's not plowed, and I won't plow it out.
No, uh, what is it on the, on the main road? Isn't that Herrick?
Oh, where the passing lane is?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they haul from the canyon all the way to Cascade. They start at six o'clock at night, and they haul till about four o'clock in the morning. And I mean, heavy loads, big trucks. When it starts raining. Oh, no, they got, it'll, it'll be, it'll be a good part of the summer, they've still got three or four more corners to blast out.
The, the actual full closure from the ten to two is only through May. And then they open one lane again with a traffic signal until after Labor Day. And then they go back again to the ten to two closures.
See how that works.
Yeah, I think this week, actually.
Starting in March.
Yeah.
But I'm not plowing, not plowing Smith's Ferry Drive open. It's gonna be a total meltout, because the more people we keep off of that during spring melt-off, the better it's gonna hold up.
Yeah, your biggest concern there is the loggers might wanna move in, but I kinda doubt they'll be doing much logging.
That's, it's almost too steep to even run chains on a logging truck on that road. Other than that, I got got the advisory group some numbers. See if a newer used paver would benefit us. If we do four miles a year of paving, we'll have it paid off in about fourteen miles of road.
Jeff, have you done feeling that larger groups coming to the point where you're talking about a levy and working up some figures, you feel like that's a drug?
That's, it's, yeah, we just kinda gotta redirect once in a while, I guess, is a good way to put it. Yeah, Kirby, Rob Robertson, Robertson's working with me, he wants a lot of stuff in two weeks, and there's no way I'm gonna get it to him in two weeks, we're just I mean, most people don't realize, it's just me and Mickey down there, and I'm in the middle of getting two, two bids out. Hoping to have them done here in the next couple of weeks for paving West Lake Fork when we get it rebuilt, and crushing contract.
Kirby's working with Jeff on a full rotation, so we know exactly when equipment should be rotated in and out, what maintenance is it.
Jeff, I was just gonna ask you about that paver, too, is, I know we've talked a ton about leasing options now, and it seems like it goes back and forth kind of on various pieces of equipment, but have you guys looked at, like, what it costs to rent or lease?
Nobody rents paper. They're just, uh, you basically had to con- contract it out to somebody. Granite's price this year is almost double from what it was two years ago. Went from ten dollars a square yard to twenty, twenty-something a square yard for paving. So my bid on West Lake Fork, almost three hundred thousand dollars for pavement for a mile of road. I could probably do that for half, if I had a paver.
And I asked you this once, I don't remember your answer, but the paver you have, the whole bottom's ground off, you can't rebuild that.
Oh, no, it's not ground off, we lost the we lost the main transmission box, and it's already been rebuilt once. When I told Gordon what was going on with it, he goes, he told me, he goes, that was old when we bought it.
So, knowing that, why aren't we buying a paver now?
I've got it in my budget.
Okay.
I'm looking
Three hundred thousand on that, and you could save half, a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yep, if I can find one. I'm going down to Boise, probably here in the next month, to watch a couple of them work, a couple of different brands. See what, see what's gonna work for us. There's another brand out there, it's called Wyler. They're out of Ohio, I think, or something like that, or a lot of municipalities are using them. They're smaller, they go from eight foot to fourteen foot wide, I think. Funny for us, and they're not it's not a mainline paver, we don't need a big giant caterpillar that, that does twenty miles a day.
And how much are those?
You can find a pretty decent used one that's about three years old for, right out of about a hundred thousand.
That's a no-brainer, and we just gotta move forward on that.
You gotta go get it.
Kirby's been
Well, we gotta pay to get it shipped here, which probably be two or three thousand, but then again, do I, I'm not ever gonna buy another used piece of equipment without flying my mechanic to wherever it is to have them look at it, because that bit us in the butt last time.
You know, just cities out there on pavers, or what do they do for their stuff, like McCall?
McCall contracts everything. Jim County, Neil, Caps down there, picked a used one up from uh, Valley, Valley Paving, out of Cottonwood, got a smoking deal on it. It's big, it's a big mainline paver.
I'm just wondering if it could be any way that we could, like, lease our equipment to them if they're not using it, I mean, especially like with the city.
We've kinda done that in the past.
That was a conversation in the road advisory.
Yeah.
We share equipment, you know, if it's something you're not using.
Certain things, I mean, it's, we borrow their stuff, they borrow our stuff. Then again, what if you have a major malfunction? You, it, just like me swapping operators in a piece of equipment. You're in a road grader all day long, you know the squeaks and squawks and sounds. Somebody else gets in it and ignores a new squeaker squawk, and all of a sudden blows the motor up. You're without something to plow with the rest of the winter. Right, we try really hard not to borrow, because, you know, you loan your four thousand dollar bicycle to your buddy? I don't know how much they are.
I was looking at your, the top ten roads. So East Lake Road, five thousand dollars, that'll be enough to patch all those holes that are out there right now?
Oh, yeah, that's if we do a grader patch on it. Patching parts, not that much, it's putting that grader, grader patch over the top of it, or and once again, if we had a paver, we could just patch all the potholes, get everything level, and run our paver on it, and put an inch and a half asphalt over the top, seal the water out of it, we're good.
Put a Boise center on.
I'm gonna
Good things would happen.
I'm gonna find out who's paving from Donley to McCall this year, who's got that contract, and see how much they'd charge to on a paver from the bridge to the highway for us.
From Donley to McCall, so that's sectioned out by Yelkater?
Donley, Donley to McCall's getting redone this year.
So maybe when we were on the phone with him, it wasn't until next year? Did they move that up?
See me in the back room, backseat going, it's this year.
Oh, nice. I did not see that. Glad to hear that. Driving that every day.
Twenty-twenty-seven. ITD doesn't do greater patches anymore.
What do they do? Nothing?
History vehicles.
The last greater patches I seen him do was up in the Adams County side, but from what I heard, they're, they're trying to get away from greater patches. It's bad, I drive, I drive it every day, I know my pickup knows where the potholes are. It starts moving to the side before I can even think to move over. Other than that, we're planning on getting out of here for spring break, whether or not we go somewhere for four or five days, or we just take little day trips here and there, but I'm gonna try to take that week off.
Okay, you need a break.
Okay.
That was the other thing I was gonna ask you, is get these guys to burn their comp time.
Yeah, they're already on it. Yep.
Have to fix the potholes first.
We're working on it, we got, we're going down tomorrow to pick up three more pallets of patch material, and then gotta find one first. The only ones I've, there's one in California, and half dozen, I'm over in the Midwest somewhere. But once again, I gotta, I gotta find a price on a new one, because our buying power, it might be better to buy a new one and have it under warranty, and we're not buying somebody else's problem. Why are they getting rid of it? I don't know.
And you might be able to sell your old one for a little bit, even though it's got a bad tranny in it.
Scrap metal, scrap metal. We've already looked. No, to rebuild that box is about, I think it's about fifteen thousand, probably twenty thousand now.
Ryan, you got your hand up?
Yeah, can I squeeze in a question while we still have Jeff here? So, um, Jeff sent a, a road maintenance agreement for me to look at as well. Uh, and I imagine that the demand for these agreements are gonna just continue to be on the uptick, but we've, I've, I've kinda put Silver Fox aside and some of these others until the road advisory committee can provide some, some direction. You want, do you wanna try to move forward or do you, do you want me to move forward with these or, um?
So let me respond to that. They want, they, they want me to redo the guiding principles because they are not on board with being the ones that are putting policy in place. So we need to work on policy on our end. We can have them read it and make them tell us, you know, give us a little bit of feedback, but I don't think that's gonna come from them. That's gonna have to come from us.
No.
So.
E- either way, that's fine, as long as the end result is we have, we have good policy for the county. You know, if they don't want their fingerprints on it, I'm certainly can work around, can work around that, but i- if, if we, if we forge ahead with crafting a, a maintenance agreement with this subdivision and then the policy takes us in a little bit of a different direction, then that creates a headache for us to unwind that down, down the road. So I wanna get your feedback on that while Jeff is here to give some input on those. You know, maybe some of these subdivisions have some expectations that we, you know, get this done sooner rather than later. So whatever guidance you can provide, I appreciate it.
So what I sent him was the landmark north.
Which one is that?
Gammon and Immo Loo, she was here presenting.
Oh. I thought we told them we're not doing it.
Doing what?
Maintaining it.
We're not, this, this is a maintenance agreement for them to maintain that county road.
Oh, got it.
I basically modeled it off of Midas Gold's perpetuals, but it's a little bit different. I think I've changed everything the way it should be and that's, I gave to him to review and.
And I don't have an issue with, with their doing the work. I guess my only hangup on that whole thing is that she wanted to put in the private road, you know, people had to keep people out there and really it's that part.
So we need to, yeah, I mean, we're pulling, I've got private road signs all over in my office and Sam's got them and we pull them, pull them all over the county. People put them up on these little dead end roads and next thing we know, like, oh, go pull that one down. Not supposed to be, there's gotta be getting expensive for a couple of these subdivisions because every year we go and pull two or three of them out.
Brian, what do you recommend? So the, so for this, this particular agreement we have, i- it's basically they'll take over all summer and winter maintenance, which is a good agreement for the, it's a good agreement for the county to have, if that's the direction we're gonna go. But we could end up with, could end up with a real patchwork quilt kind of a situation, which I, you know, I, I don't know how that's gonna work where, how we're gonna determine which homeowners association is gonna take over. Some and others are gonna be getting the service from the county, we're gonna be getting county maintenance and planning and how, that, that's one of the things that I'm looking for some direction from that policy on how you prioritize and make those decisions on where, where the county's gonna plow in the wintertime and where homeowners are gonna have to foot that, foot that expense. So, so I guess that's one of the, that's one of the challenges that I see with, with having an agreement moving forward right now. The other thing is, I think the standard agreement that we previously had, we're gonna have to, we're gonna probably have to bolster some indemnification language in it and make sure that it's very.
Probably be a microphone so that people can actually hear what you're saying. Sorry, I just happened to hit me.
Well, okay, let me back up. So, um, i- if we have agreements, if we have agreements now that we, that we move forward on, even if they're, uh, agreements where these homeowners associations are going to take over both summer and winter maintenance, those are, tho- those seem to be favorable agreements for the county, but, but what's yet to be determined is how we're gonna prioritize that. And some guidance through the policymaking process on, on how to make those decisions in the future will be helpful, uh, in crafting those agreements. And then the second part was the indemnification language, that we make it very clear when we're turning over the responsibility for maintenance, that the county is not going to indemnify the, uh, the homeowners or the landowners, but the opposite of that is what we're going to be putting in this agreement, that if there is property damage or if there is, um, uh, is associated with that, that they're, they're responsible, either through, uh, an insurance or bond requirement, or they're gonna at least hold the county harmless for any negligence in, in the, uh, maintenance that agrees. So I'll have to work on some language to, to bolster that, make it more clear. Uh, but again, that might be something that you wanna take a look at and make sure you understand it, you approve it, you're okay with it before we start signing agreements and get them out and then have to bring them back and say, we've got to, we've got to renegotiate this.
And I think that was kinda my question, too, Brian, is that we had the standard agreement, I'm assuming you bolstered the language in that, but the, I think the, the other question was, is what are the criteria for us entering into those agreements? And that was kinda the more what we're hoping that.
Correct.
Coming to play.
Yep.
So I don't know if that's, they, they have no interest in helping with that. So that puts responsibility back on us.
Yep. And I think that it comes down to, um, I have yet to find what those, the five areas are that, that we reference, you know? We will either do A, B, C, D, or F. And one of them is, you know, you bring it totally to county standard with pavement and then we would take the road.
Hmm.
Um, underneath that, there's minimum levels. I mean, some of it, we're not doing anything with it because it's a dirt patch, you know, that you didn't do anything to. Um, so it's establishing those levels and Jeff, maybe you and I just need to sit down and deal with, trying to figure that out.
Well, when we talked about it years ago, and though you helped me here with this one, but when we talked about, it's gotta be about independent standards at that time, it was only gravel, it wasn't paved. So we decided we need to change this to where it's paved, too, because we couldn't afford to paint the roads either. Before we would take that road on. So maybe what we need to do is look at, okay, if you only bring it up to a gravel road, it's got good drainage, it's got the right width, the right crown, everything's good, then maybe we only maintain it in the summer and we don't plow it anymore. If you pave it, then we'll come in and do the winter. I don't know, I'm just trying to throw ideas out there, but one of the things I have never got a good clear answer to is that just because a developer dedicates this road for the, for a public, or a regional, a public property, why does that immediately fall on the county to have to take care of that road? Public could be the Forest Service, state, but I don't, I mean, I don't know where we've lost it on that. You know, this is a public right of way, so automatically the county has to bear all that cost to keep that open and never have stood down.
Yeah.
It's not written that way.
It's what, it's what we accept. We don't have to accept anything.
What, what I've observed so far is that the agreements that we're willing to enter into really is, is related to where Jeff has obligations to maintain and the proximity towards that fits within the, the schedule and the budget. So, um, a- a- and tha- that makes perfect sense and that might be the way you wanna prioritize these roads based on where he's at, but from, from my perspective, I just need to know what it is so I can incorporate that into these agreements and then, and then we can move forward in a consistent way.
So.
Something like that would be a guy that lives a half mile out, he's the only house out there. To me, that's not, that's not, that's possibly a given for the county.
Right, right.
But if there's ten guys out there, that's a different story.
Yeah. And, and, and as a matter of developing public policy, that's not my lane of traffic necess- necessarily, but the more you can, the, the more you can hone in on that and get that kind of codified in some sort of a policy and make that publicly available, that's going to help, uh, that's gonna help potential buyers and homeowners understand, here's what the expectation is. And, and I, I was visiting with the sheriff about a different issue earlier this morning and road maintenance came up because one of the requests that, that they mentioned was coming my way was, what do you want, what do you want us to, what would you advise that we tell people about road maintenance, road issues? And, and I said, well, I, I think that if, if we're strategic and, and thoughtful in the way that we develop a policy, then when you get complaints, whether it's the sheriff gets complaint or you as commissioners get complaints, we can refer them back to the policy. That can give guidance that if it's a good policy, it'll answer the majority of the questions that, that we are routinely getting and, and, and not have things going in multiple directions when it comes to, um, you know, who's gonna come plow the road. Maintain it in the summertime, too.
I'm surprised the sheriff's office didn't ask me. I don't know what they'd be talking about, but.
It's probably because he was sitting there.
I was, I was just, yeah, it was a, it, it was a matter of convenience more than anything. Uh, Silver Fox was one of the things that we, uh, had, had come up and I think the sheriff's been out there a few times for various reasons.
I think we went through, made all of our no parking signs exactly the same because they wouldn't write tickets on them a few years ago. Some said, no parking, other one said, no parking on roadway. This one said.
Yeah.
This one said that. So we went through all of our signs, say the same exact thing, no parking on the roadway.
Do they have the ordinance stickers on there yet or did we get those? That was one of the things that we needed to follow up on.
Yeah. So bottom line, I've got this pending request for review on, for this road maintenance. Um, need some direction. You want me to set that aside and, and hold on that? I guess the alternative is quite possibly, since the advisory committee isn't, isn't really interested in being involved in this, we could potentially use this as a model agreement. I can spend, I can spend some time really digging into it, trying to get that indemnification language put together. We can use this kind of as the base, baseline for all agreements moving forward. And, and, you know, even the advisory committee may be interested in, in taking a look at it before it's signed and saying, we like this or don't like that or something.
That's an awesome idea, was put something together and just put it out there and see what kind of vibes we get back.
I was, I was just gonna say, I was just gonna suggest maybe if you come up with sort of an outline and maybe we set aside an hour for us all to sit down and chat about it.
Sure.
Try to go through it piece by piece and work out any other details that we're talking about, so we're not just saying, hey, thanks, Brian, we really appreciate this.
Yeah, ha- having, having a, having a straw man to work from usually generates a lot more conversation, a little more valuable, valuable feedback from, from folks that review it than, than talking about ideas. So, um, sounds like that's the, that's the plan or the direction you'd like me to go is to, is to use this one as, as kind of that jumping off point. We can, uh, uh, kind of create a model agreement that, uh, can be adjusted before it's finalized.
I think that's awesome, but I would look at, just like the roads we talked about here, what, two or three weeks ago, Zune and the one in Spring Valley that had the fire hydrant at the end that we found out later didn't have water to it. Those are the kind of things, if you do all this, if you have all this, then we'll take that on unless you live five miles up in High Valley, you're all by yourself and we probably won't. Set some of those guidelines out and work with Brian, find out how you feel.
I mean, I like the idea of what we come up with connectivity. You're gonna build a road to nowhere and put a cul-de-sac at the end and want us to take it over? One more intersection, one more cul-de-sac. How many of those are we gonna end up with in the next ten years?
Well, it turned me into a good point a while back about, you know, we've got all these different subdivisions all through the valley, they've all got their own county road with the cul-de-sac at the end. We need to look more long-term and say, we're gonna bend this road and put these two together. So this is a loop route and we can do this in six hours. Otherwise, it's just, we're not gonna take it on and encourage that connectivity.
Well, and also, if you're gonna build a subdivision at the end of a county road, you're gonna build the county road at county standards, pave it to your subdivision and then that's a different conversation. But, you know, because just putting subdivisions out in the middle of a dirt road that has no capacity to hold the subdivision, in my opinion, we need to look at.
Well, and the other thing, too, that was working great for a while was Jeff was working with different developers, different southern homeowners, that, hey, if you guys buy the oil, we'll come in, we'll provide the chips and the paper, we'll pave your road for you. So they, they basically paid about half that cost. And that was working and then our paper kind of died and that was into that.
Well, that's if we have the money. I mean, if we don't have money to service the existing roads we have, then we don't need to be participating and paying more than, the expectation is that we take them on.
You need to fix what I've already got.
Yeah, we need to, yeah, exactly.
Regravel or pave or whatever, I need to concentrate on what's already there without taking on new stuff.
Unless it's built to county standards, because then when we take it on, our larger conversation is, is that that adds to the county tax base, but some of that county tax base is gonna have to go back to Jeff to take care of those roads.
That's the road.
That's the road, right?
Exactly.
That's the hardest part.
I brought up in the advisory committee last week that some of this pavement's getting so bad, my best option is to go in there and mill it, lay it out, roll it, put calcium fluoride on it two or three times a year, keep the dust down and carry and swing hills. And I know it because you're riding a really fine line because you've taken a paved road to somebody's half million dollar house, you're gonna turn it to gravel? Watch your step.
And that's, yeah, you're devaluing people's property when it goes from a paved road to a dirt road, so.
But you gotta keep in mind, too, the cheapest road to maintain is a gravel road.
Once we turn it into pavement, though, we've accepted that, you know, responsibility, in my opinion. So there's a greater conversation, obviously, but.
Why, I was gonna say, why are we ending up on the pavement, pavement for accepting a road?
That was before my time, but we've accepted some roads in Wagon Wheel that were older, older meadows, whatever it's called, it's where that meadow's place is. That was accepted. Drainage is horrible.
Horrible.
No crush on top of the road, burst of blade, solid, it's all big, ten, twelve inch rock with about that much gravel over the top. That's gone.
There's no drainage?
There's no drainage and there's people building out there, so I, I just know this spring, I'm gonna get called in there and go, Jesus, I mean, you built my house, you had like a duck swimming in my lot.
Yeah.
No. I gotta make water to figure out, I gotta figure out how to make water for my field.
And you could probably do that. Well, Brian, I think that's the general direction we gotta go in. None of us knows how to figure this out. None of us, that's all. The point we're, we've got another three or four million dollars, we need to jump on the, the baby thing pretty hard right now.
Yeah.
It's just not there, so what do you do?
So one of us needs to take and start from the very beginning because planning and zoning is putting on the plots when they come out that we may or may not accept, or it doesn't even state that. It's not clear on when we will accept a road. So that's going out there on a plot. So you go to sell those lots, I mean, the agents are just saying, well, they're gonna go ahead and take over maintenance and that's, it's unclear. So we need to start from the very beginning, make sure that every statement that we've made to development is clear and precise and walk it all the way through the process to the end.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the task at hand.
So I guess might, might you just, if you put some of the straw man together, bring it back and just start working.
We can, we can start first with this, uh, with road maintenance agreement and then some of us could have to work backwards a little bit based on what you're saying that we have to, as in the county, the board of commissioners needs to make a decision about, uh, how to prioritize and what roads are gonna be maintained by the county, which ones are not gonna be maintained by the county and then get that information out there. But we'll have a standard, we'll have a standard understanding or a standard agreement for maintenance for those that will be accepted and those that will not and, and how indemnification will work and what the expectations are. And then, of course, these agreements add additional tasks for the road department that when you have, when you have an agreement, they have to be, have to be managed, they have to be inspected to make sure that people that have agreed to do certain things are doing them and, and that, we'll have to have that conversation with that, with that bigger group, too. But just kind of laying the groundwork of how, kind of how I see, uh, things progressing going forward, just for no other reason than to plant the seed and then you can give me feedback when I have questions about how do you want this handled or what, what direction you want this to go, so.
And it'd be nice to have a real solid policy.
Yeah.
Question for them about.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Sounds.
We're doing a lot of bouncing around.
Yeah. Yeah.
He was always built to county standards, and, yeah, pretty arbitrary.
What would, what would an agreement like this mean if we got this thing put together? What would it mean for like areas like, I always think about West Mountain. I know, I know you weren't talking about it.
What we need to do, we need to figure out a year, a year to break this at, just like my 2013 subdivision plat, that anything pre-2013, they can have a steeper driveway. But anything after 2013, they have to abide by this agreement that was adopted by ordinance in 2013 that, no, your driveway will have no more than an 8% run out, whatever, to the county road.
But I guess what I'm saying, too, is so we've got all those roads that we're gonna say, you don't have to bring them up to county standards, they already have been accepted. Or we already.
Accepted as a public road.
Right.
Can't go backwards.
Right, we're not maintaining any of them, but do we need to get a road agreement in place with those groups?
That's what we need to figure, we need to have a date in there somewhere, because if we do all those little roads like over on West Mountain, I won't get nothing done. We're talking, I mean.
But that, that, that.
This road's done by.
That's what we're saying, of having a uniform policy.
Yeah. This road is done by Larry, the road right next to us done by Mark, the road right next to us done by Joe.
I, I know, it's a word, it's a word, it's a few words, but I'm just saying, like, that's part of what we gotta kind of make out with this, as we move forward, is like, are we just gonna say, moving forward, anybody that wants this, we can sign an agreement with, or what are you gonna do about the ones that have been doing it?
Even though, this gets back to my original statement, even though, when those were developed, it was given public access to that, doesn't necessarily mean the county's got data on it.
Right, right.
And that could be stated in the policy.
I think that, I think you're gonna see, as this thing evolves, you're gonna see different classes of roads. And you go back to, you, you go back to the, the court case, we, you know, the county litigated just recently, and, and the court was pretty clear there that the, the reason or the definition that we put behind maintain from the county's perspective is that, that doesn't mean it's snow, it's plowed in the, in the wintertime or even maintained in the summertime. Maintaining a road meaning it's, it's, the road exists, and the county keeps that on the record as a road that exists. That doesn't mean that Jeff has any obligation whatsoever. And then we're gonna have another class of road where there is some responsibility that the county has to plow in the wintertime and maybe, uh, blade it in the, in the summertime, and then there'll be another class of road where it's maintained as a county road, but there is a, a private agreement for, uh, wintertime maintenance. And so we'll have these different classifications, so as, as people want to develop land, or they wanna build a house, or they wanna buy a lot, they'll see what, what kind of a classification that road is, and those questions will hopefully be answered by, by that policy.
And it should be assigned right up front. If we're signing a subdivision plat, it should say, this road has been classified as a, this. And as we move forward, it's right on the plot, and people have a full expectation when they look at it.
Yeah. Yeah. I probably took Jeff's time when I should have been here, maybe asking this question when Brian, when Brian was, was up here, but, yeah, I think, uh, just getting some feedback from you on how, how to proceed is gonna help me be a little more efficient in getting some of these things, uh, moving, moving forward, so.
Appreciate you working on it.
I was gonna say, that's great.
Yeah, yeah. I think, uh, there's a lot of little things that you could put in, like the 8% grade, you know, the 28 foot versus the 20 foot, and all these things that we could stick in that, break those classifications out.
All right. Well, soon as you can, uh, stop wearing the reflective coat and a different, a different color coat than you and I can.
That's his dress code.
I really, I really appreciate, working, working managers is such.
Gathering that classification stuff is, that's. I mean, I've got maintenance levels A, B, C, and D. We need road classifications X, Y, Z.
Brian, are you suggesting getting together with Jeff and then is it potentially having like a workshop with the commissioners at a later date?
Yeah, I think that'd be, that would be very helpful to me, is I can set up a private appointment with Jeff and then, uh, and then get on the agenda, or however you, however you do that, so. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right.
I was sure they'd have you do it than me.
He took up the rest of my time, I'm leaving.
See ya.
We need to do a minute or two to lock for the six.
Thank you.
Bye.
Yes, absolutely, if that's what you want to do.
Do you mind that for a tear still?
What, what we're finding here is.
Well, I'm gonna move on, our next tip item is a presentation body, I don't target juvenile corrections district lands on, reaching back peace. Skip.
I'm so glad I'm some here.
He's made here.
So thankful that Oki's on board.
Why not? That's a huge difference.
What a huge difference.
Alicia, how are you? Come on up.
I'm just complimenting you, patting you on the back, saying, I'm very thankful you're here.
Nice to meet you. Come on up, we should to the front table, go up in there if you want, so. And Cherry, this is, oh, you have a window there.
Yep, I saw him anyway online.
How are you, Alicia?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good to see you.
Last summer, right? I was late last year because of the weather, so we came, this is last summer.
We got the numbers, things work a lot better, we have a lot of good kids up here.
You do, and I was going to ask, um, if you, if you have the packet, so that's great.
Yeah.
Um, you have yours, okay.
I do.
Good. Okay, so you've looked at it, um, it does look a little different. I know last year the layout was totally redone from years past, and this year it's a little different again. I like, my whole idea was to have it, um, able to be understood by anybody in the community, because these are public, right?
And this is so much easier.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that. I had also, hopefully, is kind of every page has a theme, is the idea, so that if somebody picked it up, you know, of course, I wouldn't have to, or my counterparts explain it to everybody, um, but of course, we're also available if anybody has questions. But, um, that's kind of the idea would be, so there are some subheaders and, um, the themes and everything, so I'll go through a little bit, ask questions if you have them as we're going, but there are a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. One thing being that the, on page two.
Are you on the state one, or are you on the Valley County?
Valley County.
Okay.
Yes. Um, on page two, um, the first page of charts, the top row, the second chart, which is detention admissions, that's new, and so this is, this is new data, we're still trying to get it, um, we're, we're honing in on that data, so we don't have, I mean, I know we have three years listed here, um, but we pulled that data from somebody else. This will be something we will be listing from here on out, and obviously, once we catch up, it will be all our data, so we will know that it's accurate. But just to kind of point out, this is detention admissions, of course, you don't have a detention facility, but what it is, it's Valley County kids that have been in any detention facility around the state of Idaho. So really, I don't know, I guess I feel like that means more than how many kids have been in your detention facility, because that's not specific to your area, right? So two Valley County kids in the year of 2020 were in a detention facility, um, somewhere in Idaho. Um, also to point out, too, that juvenile petitions chart, the top right, um, blue chart, uh, well, let me back up. So arrests have gone down, number of kids on probation, just statewide, Valley County, yes, but statewide as a trend have gone down. Of course, COVID has played a role, right? But to me, when I, when I think about that and I see, well, petitions hasn't really gone down, why not? Part of that is because petitions can be probation violations, those aren't necessarily new charges, right? Those are filed from probation and not a new, um, legal charge. So some of that is because of probation violations. Um, and in speaking with both Skip and his probation officer, Dee, there have been a lot of probation violations due to drug use. I know COVID has been hard for kids, they're not supervised as much, right? Because schools have been closed as far as the in-person piece, so they're not getting that oversight, um, during the daytime. A lot of times, too, in the school, that's where a lot of kids have their person that they trust, right? Because you don't, they don't all have that in their home. But it's also, that person is checking in on them, right? And making sure how are things going on a daily basis, do you need anything? And so that's not happening as much, or wasn't for this last year. So anyway, um, I think some kids resorted to drug use, um, and Dee did continue to do UAs throughout COVID. Some probation departments put those on hold for a long time, some had them done out, um, at a different, like, out of house in a different facility, but Dee continued to do those. Um, so she did notice continued use with some kids, or new use with some kids, so that number didn't decline, um, like some of those other trends. Um, so just a little explanation on that. As far as charges, though, I, I did the math, for 2019, there was a total of 45 charges, so I'm looking at the bottom set of charts in the maroon. This breaks it down into types of charges, but when you add both, uh, the 2019 felony and misdemeanor, that was 45 for 2019 charges filed, and then in 2020, it was 37. So the number of charges filed on that criminal level did decline as well as the arrests. So those go hand in hand.
Alicia, do you have any information on, because COVID did keep a lot of the kids out of jail, or, you know, do you have any idea how many were, how do I want to put it, how many should have been charged but weren't because of the COVID situation, or?
You know, I don't, um, but talking with Skip just before coming in here, I mean, I know the population in Idaho has been growing, and that also means the juvenile population, statewide, there's a 1% increase, and Skip did say, um, that the population here has increased, and, um, he let me know, as far as like the number of kids in school, that's gone up a lot, it sounds like, um, there's maybe a concern, or do we have enough seats? Do we have enough teachers? What's the population going to be in the classrooms once they do go in person? So it's, that's happened statewide, and you guys aren't excluded there. So I would guess the same, if not more, just because the population's going up. But, you know, on the other hand, too, we have seen a downward trend statewide, pre-COVID, just because a, a lot of the good work that's going on in the community, um, not just our probation officers, but they are a huge piece, and Dee is huge. I mean, here, her and Skip and just that department, in a smaller town, I think it's easier, but have done so much good work with the community, personally, you know? In a bigger town, you're almost farming everything out, right? You've got a gigantic caseload, and you're like, oh, how can I connect you to people? But Dee is the one doing that work and making those connections with other people in the community, um, to help her do that work, you know, um, that have those specialties. So I also see maybe not an increase because she's able to get that change in the community, right? And working with the schools, which she does, um, that's gonna be your, your first level, I think. You know, that's where those kids might start to be seen to have some issues, you know? The elementary schools, the teachers are being aware, the SROs are aware, um, you guys have, and Skip mentioned this when he spoke earlier, but Yak, um, V Corps, you, your, um, hospital employees are very connected, um, so I think people just aware and communicating with each other. So that being said, I don't know here if there would necessarily be an increase just because the population is going up.
No, but that change from 18 to 19, 15 to 45 kids, that's a big jump.
Right.
And I'm wondering, too, if maybe because we closed down juvenile kids and kids thought that maybe they could get away with it, you know? I don't know, I'm just speculating, but that's a big jump.
I would say that, you know, another component in this is, is law enforcement isn't making the contacts, or hasn't been, because of COVID, that they normally do. I, I think that's true with adult and juvenile, like, a perfect example is Friday night, they see somebody turn without using their turn light, they used to pull one. They, they haven't been doing those contacts unless they can see an immediate threat to society based on their policies for COVID. And I think that that's played a part, maybe a part in this.
But wouldn't you see more numbers this year, Skip? Wouldn't, I mean, the last year, we, we should, these numbers should have exploded.
I think that Alicia had mentioned, a lot of what she said with the work that's being done is making a difference, but I think the lack of kids being in school, is you get a lot of charges and nonsense that happens from people being in school, and then the law enforcement contact, I think, is the expectation. Because my, my belief would be the same, I've never seen a criminal, criminal activity decline when a population is, ever.
Yeah.
And we have a lot of people in town that removed here specifically because of their kids. My cousin who's a teacher said that they were thinking about going back, the school was considering going back to full-time, but because of the enrollments from people from Washington, California, from Boise that have houses up here, they have kids up here because they did want them to have some inner contact, um, they don't know that they have enough seats or teachers right now, they're not sure.
So if there's kids that are here from out of state that are, no, no school at home, so they can go home and dad and call and do their homework online every day, and then...
And they go to school twice, twice a week, so. And so it's, I think she's put it together wonderfully, but it's, it's speculation. It, it's not, to me, doesn't quite make sense, except for what she's added in there with, Dee has done an amazing job with really connecting the community and what strength and stakeholders we have, and that plays a part, but why have the rest of it's gone down? I can only blame on COVID, is my guess.
I would agree with that. I'd love to concur that, you know, we're doing a great job, and I think that we are. I think there's some really strong programs in the community, but this year has been one that, I mean, kids are just hurting, they're at risk. I mean, these numbers, I know, I, I am certain are deflated because of COVID, but we keep our fingers crossed, let's get these kids back in school.
Well, they need the resources.
They need the resources.
Going to be better than a criminal charge.
Absolutely.
For most kids. There are definitely some that are not going to be compelled to change because of those reasons, and might need more, but definitely those resources are what's really, really important. So it'll be, I mean, we like to keep track of these things, and so we'll keep, you know, keeping track, um, of how COVID's affecting and the aftermath of COVID is affecting all of our youth. But I see Commissioner Hasbrook, what you're, I mean, 2018, and I don't have an, um, explanation at this point, but the numbers were low when you then look at 19 and then 20. And I don't remember when the detention facility closed, might have been 2017. 17, okay. So, yeah, that could have had.
And, and so many more were missing here, felonies, actually, yeah.
Right.
Tells me kids are a little old, but they're not old enough to do some realistic.
It's perfect.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so see, it'd be interesting to see if there's any way to break down the data that you guys have to show, the number of these are coming from school setting versus out of the community. I mean, I would probably give you some information about like this year in particular, compare that back.
Right.
I mean, I would, I would imagine it'd be probably more like possession charges, you know, whatever it is, nicotine, drugs in school, when they're in full-time school. So it'd be really interesting, I think, to see if you could separate that data out anyways.
I would think so, but by referral source, we should be able to, it might be going directly to the prosecutor's office to help with that data, but.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where you can find that data.
There's also, I just got off the phone with the superintendent about getting the kids back in school, and if you have a child at risk, if you guys are aware of anyone at risk, you can request that they go full-time. There is room for the middle school and the high school for kids to be full-time, and as a matter of fact, most of the high school kids are offered the opportunity to go full-time. And about half of them are taking that. So there's a lot of empty seats in the high school right now. So if you have somebody at risk, Dee knows somebody that needs to be under that, you need to get together with the school and get them back in school.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing, and I'm not trying to say, you know, versus, McCall versus Cascade, but Cascade's been in school the whole time, not on a full-time schedule, but it'd be interesting to see these numbers here, how many were from this end of the valley and how many were from that end of the valley.
Not on a full-time schedule?
No, they go two, three days, and they're two, three days home.
Well, that's what McCall's doing. I thought these guys were in full-time. Interesting.
I think the elementary is, but not the high school.
Got it.
But that would be, I'm trying to figure out that, the data set on that would be easy to find. Anyway.
It's still some, all this data is pulled from our IDOT system, the juvenile justice system, um, and so it should, this is a combination between myself and one of my coworkers who puts this together. So she pulls the data, if we can export it to Excel and sort it by school, because our system, the IDOT system has, you input which school they're from.
Oh, I would love to see that.
Then we might be able to, again, separate it by school district. I mean, I, I can, I think that there probably would be a way, um, but she's the one that does the initial data extract, and then I do the charts piece, so, um, I think that there's probably a way to do that.
If you could, you don't have to like this week, but maybe dig that out. I'd just be interested to see, because we talk about this a lot, the health districts, too, is if they're in school, out of school, part-time, homeschool, charter schools, I mean, there's so much data out there, you don't really know, not apples and oranges, I mean, there's so much data out there, you don't really know, not apples and oranges, there are grapes and monkeys.
Right.
It's really different data.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll see what we can do as far as that goes.
Okay.
Um, okay, page three. Um, so the thing that I that jumps out at me is the probation success rate um went down. So that's the bottom left chart to forty four percent. And again, this is, and what DeeDee specifically said, um, that she has noticed even without looking at this chart, um, was because of the probation violations. So of course, if you have a probation violation, you didn't, you didn't succeed on that decree, right? So if they were resentenced, I mean, eventually, once you complete, you will, our system will show that you succeeded, but you didn't succeed on this decree. Um, and so that's what uh what she has noticed is those that jump in probation violations. And that's not necessarily kids that were sentenced in two thousand twenty. They could have been sentenced at the end of two thousand nineteen and still been on, you know, six months into their decree and had a probation violation or whatever length that decree, court decree was. Um, and so that's what she noticed and I know that you had a hundred percent success rate the last two years. Um, so that's, that's what jumps out at her.
We need that screen for COVID.
And I, yeah, I agree, I think that.
Nothing to do, the school works done, getting along with my buds and we're gonna get in trouble.
Right.
We talked about it, actually. And of the probation violations, and this was graduate sanctions too. So it wasn't the first time they used marijuana, right? This is going through a process of continued use. But she believed that almost all of those probation violations were based on community drug use. And we think there was two that were actually new crimes. So and then she did say, you know, they're not in school, so they don't, like Alicia said earlier, they don't have that structured event. They don't have those check-ins like they always did. And that was her conclusion as well, that too much time on their hands, mom and dad not around.
Absolutely.
Mom and dad are probably both working, trying to keep it all together, right?
Depression is huge and teen kids right now.
It is.
I've heard teen pregnancy rates are up.
It's increased for us, at least at house. Is there's definitely been a spike this year in the last twelve months.
What we're doing to our children.
And at least attempts and reported ideas of self harm.
Yeah, I think I've seen more self harm than actual suicide in health districts. That's one of twenty thousand other things we're watching too, so.
Mm-hmm. Um, so I'm gonna jump to the next page. And this is just um an overview of what does the average juvenile offender look like. So um, and in Valley County, this isn't skewed in any way from what your population looks like. Um, average age at point of intake was four to sixteen years old, um, white male. So we like to look at, you know, what does the census, what's the makeup of each county when we, when we pull this information? Just to see, is there any disparities going on? Um, and in Valley County, there's not, um, but in some areas of the state. Um, the Juvenile Justice Commission, that's one of the focuses, is to work on racial and ethnic disparities. Are there any and how do we help remedy those? And so that's being done on on a statewide level and in some counties around the state. Um, so we like to put this out here just so that you can see what youth, you know, what that average offender looks like. Um, page five, so the top, the maroon. Um, this is a snapshot, so this is one day what things looked like. Um, and what I see is that juveniles on probation went up. Um, which of course, that doesn't necessarily jive with everything else. However, um, it's not, and I said this on the chart before too, it's not necessarily kids that were put on probation in two thousand twenty because these stats were taken on that day, so they could have been put on probation in two thousand and twenty or two thousand nineteen or if. And I, you guys have only had a couple of kids go into DJC custody. Um, but just if there were kids on probation for a little bit longer, um, they will be captured in that snapshot since that's just one day, September thirtieth. Um, and then, of course, like we've already said, the extra probation violations and kids that have struggled. So that number on probation that day went up compared to that date last, the year before, two thousand nineteen. But the juveniles on diversion stayed the same, juveniles in custody, again, like I said, you only have had a couple in the last um year or two. Um, so that went down. Um, your, so the bottom right is the the blue chart, that's the recidivism chart. And so um there's been zero percent recidivism. Um, so we track that by once after they've completed probation, we track six months after, twelve months after, and then um twenty four months after. Completion of probation, so that's that successful completion of probation. Um, and there has not been any recidivism in the last two years.
That's the degree of probation.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
It really is.
It is.
That's the goal, is keep them recidivating, recidivizing again.
Right.
So that's kudos to you guys, Skip. The only thing I don't like about that is the mischarges, zero dollars paid directly to the victim.
And so I don't know what was ordered to the victims, so that that's the system I talked about. I-DOT does not track these two items, so the community service and the the money paid. So that's specifically what um Skip reports to us. And so I don't see how much has been ordered um versus what was or wasn't paid. So I'm not sure what that number would have been.
So I can tell you, so right since two thousand twenty, we've had two cases that had a victim restitution, huge restitution for the damage done at the middle school. Those are the only two cases that we had directly restitution for and they haven't paid towards it. And um, we're talking about families that struggle financially a lot. Um, they struggle with just being parents. You know, one is actually the grandpa that's parenting the child. And then the one that's just in very poverty, so that that amount of restitution that's owed to the Dona School District. The damage there is what we have and they haven't made any payments.
So how long have you followed that debt, so to speak?
You followed it until the case closes and and really it comes back to the courts, the court made an order on the restitution. Um, these two boys both went to by DJC and were both, one was released a couple of months earlier, but they've only been out for about four and a half months. And quite frankly, on the probation side, because of their needs, which are a lot, um, their own personal needs. Um, it's been high on the priority of just trying to get them stabilized in their homes, trying to get them back to the class, have them functioning. And it falls pretty low on our, it's important, but it falls pretty low on what we need to get done right now. So there there will be juvenile court hearings that address that with the with the children and families as that progresses. And that'll be up to the court to determine how to deal with that. If you also get to the place of like, can't get blood out of a tournament kind of thing? So I don't, I don't know what the answer is for that.
Yeah, I think right now our fees and fines are over two million dollar over Valley County. So it's not just a juvenile problem, it's also an adult problem too, so.
Yeah, and so, and you know, on the adult side, and that's something actually I'll talk to you a little bit later about. But um we have policy set up as far as when we do PBs to keep these cases where people don't win. If they owe any restitution, it's automatic, right? We turn back to court before the case expires and the court loses jurisdiction. Um, and then that money, at least I believe, is still set up through collection systems, is that right, Doug?
Yes.
It's just that what the corporate probably does once a month is do a report, anybody that owes case close, they send them an affidavit, let them know you gotta pay this and not these functions. But, you know, what we had set up before was, with the prosecuting attorney, the directive was, if they owe any restitution, we file a PB prior to their case being terminated by the state, like their probation ends on December second. The court loses jurisdiction and that's still in place. But currently, the prosecuting attorney said that he doesn't want us to do without case fines, costs and fines unless it's a thousand or more. Um, and I haven't had a really chance to talk to him, but I would foresee our, what's owed to us increasing if we stick with that.
Yeah, that could, that could get pretty big pretty fast.
But that's, you know, that's between, that's the prosecuting attorney's discretion. Um, and Judge Diggle died, I'm sure he might have an opinion on that too, but it just.
My feeling is, is always compensate the victim first. And I know there was legislation three, four years ago about if they sent money to the court, it was supposed to be split. Some of the court, some of the victim, some of the court costs, I don't, I don't remember exactly how that's gonna work, but. Um, to me, it's the victim should be paid that first.
That's the Supreme Court rule.
Yeah.
On on how money is divided. And I believe restitution was moved up to the top, do you know that?
I believe it's number four on the priority of payments.
Priority payment, so that's, that's directed by the Supreme Court justice.
So who's first and when?
I think it's like the interim, there's, there's certain fees that the board has to have to function, that that's the revenue. Um, but they're not huge payments either.
No, but what we're seeing like an energy, we just closed a case here a couple of weeks ago, and a pretty substantial energy bill from nineteen eighty three. Paying five dollars a month.
The meeting has now ended.
Three. Paying five dollars a month, he finally paid it up. So it does happen, yeah.
It does teach them something.
That's the justice.
Teaches them something.
Teaches them something, makes, to me, I would wanna pay it off and know that I'm, I did my, my time, I paid my penalty and, you know. I got a clear conscience, you know, I can move on, but it's really up to these judges. It's all right, Alicia, we're just kinda wrapping, go ahead.
That's fine, that's fine. Um, moving to the last page, this is the page about funds. Um, so it's broken down into colors, so on the left, you've got the maroon. This is the um legislative pass through funds that the county has received from, or that the juvenile probation department anyway, has received from juvenile or JCA, Juvenile Corrections Act funds, tobacco and cigarette funds and lottery funds. And so we just, this isn't money that we're necessarily giving, but this is money that Department of Juvenile Corrections tracks for each county. Um, so this is just to show you what was received. Um, the blue in the center shows you what was spent towards mental health, um, behavioral health, really, because it's mental health or substance use. These are funds that Department of Juvenile Corrections manages and um provides to the counties based on the amount of ten to seventeen year olds in each county. And so, well, actually, I take that back. We have a whole pot of money that each of the districts, um, so we're in District Four here, have access to. Um, if District Four used all of the funds and another county or another district didn't, it's really all one pot, so we could use that. We don't want to give money back, um, is the bottom line. So if we have kids in need in one area, we can access that money instead of giving it back. So the point is, the the blue charts, um, on the left, that's the SUD, Substance Use Services expenditures. Um, and on the right, which is zero, that's, it's C-BASS, it's Community Based Alternative Services. It's anything other than substance use, it's mental health. Um, it can be used for transportation, for urinalysis, um, for um sexual offender rehabilitation treatment. Um, gosh, we try and have people think outside the box. So whatever you're seeing as a need for your client that's not substance use, apply for this fund or this money. Um, if if for whatever reason it can't be used, they'll be, they'll be notified of that. But um we do try and let probation officers think outside the box because the money is there.
Where do you see that?
We have, um, actually, Alicia was asking me why we have this year. But what it, what it came down to for this year is DeeDee has done such an outstanding job with understanding and coordinating with the resources of our community. That we've been able to utilize that money instead of have to realize instead of having to use this. But the last time I remember using this fund was a few years ago. We were a client with a sex offender and this is for COVID, the treatment required to be in person. And we don't have a sex offender um treatment provider up here. And so the kid had to go to Caldwell and we utilized that money to pay for the gas, the transportation back and forth. But I'm like, see, this year, we just, we haven't had to do it, we haven't even did it.
But it's good to know that's available.
And it, yeah, and it's very easy to access, I think J C is great to work with. Um, it's a broad category of different things you can use it for. And so um it's available to, we just, just haven't even did it.
So in like Judge Diggledine's case, he knows that that money's available if he decides that kid needs to go to Caldwell for this treatment or whatever. Probably tapping the net.
I mean, Judge Berice was aware, but he was a juvenile judge for a number of years. Um, so most judges probably don't, but what they do is they say, you know, part of what this kid has to do is this kind of certain kind of programming or treatment.
Okay.
And then we as a probation department say, it doesn't exist up here, how are we gonna get it? Can the parents afford it and and use that money to facilitate that kind of program?
What we really need is kids from rich parents getting into trouble. It happens all the time.
That happens.
You know what, Skip, you really should use the mic when you're talking. Unfortunately, we're being recorded and if they can't hear us, then you can sit up here beside us though.
The other thing with these funds too is they're, um, like the SUD's money can be used with diversion cases. So they don't have to be formally charged or adjudicated to use access this fund. Um, but it's to keep, the idea is to keep these kids in the community, to not continue getting in trouble because they don't have access to resources and then continue, you know, getting new charges, um, potentially end up in Department of Juvenile Corrections for treatment, you know, those sorts of things, that's keeping them in the community. And I think, and I'm hoping, telehealth will continue. I mean, there was a lot of resistance before COVID, then a lot of folks like grasped on and really, you know, the the privacy piece. Um, people were able to overcome. Um, and I'll, there's, I mean, people in the juvenile justice system, people not in the juvenile justice system, just everyday people going to counseling, dentures, you know, doctors, those sorts of things, people are doing telehealth. I'm hoping it will continue. It is funded um through Medicaid, but also through our funds. And so, you know, you you guys were talking earlier during this meeting about hoping to get new counselors in the community. Um, that's what this money is for. Of course, they have to be tied to the system, that's the only kind of downfall. It can't be those kids that you're seeing in schools identifying as they have a need, we'd like to connect them to resources. Our funds can't be used for that.
You gotta currently charge.
You have to have some tie, right, to the juvenile justice system? But diversion, that's what I'm saying, or if they're, they've been charged and they're just waiting, um, you know, to go through court and DeeDee has that case and she's doing, you know, some sort of uh detention release order supervision or something. She can access that fund, that money to get those kids, because why wait? Why wait four months or however long it gets, it takes to finally get through the system and have your court decree? Um, so anyway, the the money is there, she knows, I mean, she and I were Ada County probation officers together. Even if she hasn't used it here, she used it a ton at Ada County, she knows that resource is there, so I have no doubt that it's not being used for any reason other than she's finding resources.
We use it for pre-trial stuff.
I don't know. For, so for kids, yeah, so if they're, if it's pending, if it's pending case, and sometimes that's valid, but a lot of these, a lot of these cases, let's just say ninety nine percent of them, they're gonna plead not guilty, right? Because they're gonna have um an attorney that's gonna advise them through that just to go through the process. And and so like if a parent comes to us and says during this process, hey, we're really struggling with this and we could use this help, then it's a kind of case, but otherwise, what we're doing is we're monitoring um the detention release order, which usually is like whereabouts unknown, like the kid can't be someplace that the parents don't know. The kind of school is directed, no drug or alcohol use, that kind of thing.
Is there money like this available for a bill?
No, pre-trial? Well, there's an interlock fund that the judge can utilize for some like monitoring stuff. Um, but I think it'd be a stretch to say that they could be used for any kind of treatment, reevaluations. I'm not exactly sure, maybe Doug would know more about how that money can be used. But I know Judge Berice did use it for people for monitoring that couldn't afford it but were a risk to the community. So the county wouldn't have to pay for that bill.
You know, just thinking it's too bad we can't figure a way to do that for adults, because I think a certain percentage, we would do them good. They're already scared to death now.
Well, and I, it makes a lot of sense just on defense counsel's side. So if they're holding their hat through a plea agreement, if they can get an evaluation and start treatment prior to the hearing, it wouldn't do anything to help.
Absolutely. If we had those two million dollars in back fines, we could fund that.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Now, uh, the blurb underneath the blue chart, just to point out, um, it does say ninety six percent of youth accessing behavioral health funds were not committed to or recommitted. Um, that is a statewide figure, that's not specific to Valley County. So just pointing that out, um, I know some counties have been like, oh, it's a hundred percent for us, this is a statewide figure. So, which is great, I mean, that, using those five. I mean, that, using those funds has been phenomenal across the state. That has contributed, like I said at the very beginning, to the downward trends that we're seeing. So, and then of course, COVID this year. But the last chart is really just a chart that we like to put on here. Normally, there's not a lot of fluctuation. 2017 would've been a huge fluctuation between that and 2018 because your detention facility closed. But this is just the percent of the, of your, Skip's budget that our, our money makes up. So the, the maroon money makes up 36%. And that's just gonna change just based on what money comes in to the county each year.
Yeah, you made it so much easier to understand.
Well.
Diggledine, you have any questions? Anything you wanna throw in here?
Just looking forward to learning more about it.
We got a lot of stuff to swallow. We're gonna do this couple of months.
Yeah.
You can do it. Anything else?
Um, that's all I have. Thank you for having me and for getting me on the schedule so quickly.
Sorry we ran late today, but I'm seeing as soon as we could.
That's perfect. We got time to catch up. I haven't been up here again for almost a year and hopefully we'll get back to coming up on a monthly basis once, you know, masks and everything.
Once we start.
Figure out what that's gonna be, yeah.
Once we're normal.
Yeah, whatever, if we ever get there again.
Right.
I don't know if we'll ever be completely normal, but we're getting closer by today.
Commissioners, there was a question regarding priority of payments. The priority of payments is different in the juvenile, if cases are charged under the Juvenile Corrections Act compared to adult misdemeanor and felony. For cases that, the priority of payments for cases that are before the ju, are under the Juvenile Corrections Act, victim restitution is number one. If it's a criminal case in the misdemeanor or district court, victim restitution is number six.
Number six.
I didn't know that.
Just to clarify that.
Thanks, Doug.
So Doug, out of the $2 million that's owed to the county, do you know how much of that is juvenile?
No. And, and I'm going to dispute your number. I think we, we need to take a closer look at what, what's outstanding, but a lot of that is, I think it's just fines, court fines and court costs, but I, we could pull a report of restitution, restitution owed to victims in Valley County compared to just court costs owed to the, the case or to the county. If you're, and you're fully aware that a lot of, that money that we collect does potentially get dispersed to the state, to the city of McCall, to the city of Cascade.
About 85%, right? Pardon me? About 85% of it goes elsewhere.
Correct. The, the county receives a miniscule of those dollars to help fund the operation, but we can definitely.
In your spare time, you don't have to do it like right away, but it'll be interesting to know. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip.
Thanks for all you do.
Watch out for the puddles on the way home.
I mentioned that.
We haven't been sure talking about that.
It's not Valley County.
Doug, you see.
State. State is that highway.
Yeah, yeah. It's just bad coming out of, right in the round valley is where I noticed it.
Oh, I didn't know that it wasn't.
The snowpack out, that usually fills everything in.
Yeah, there's no snow on the road right now.
All right.
Thank you.
Be safe. Thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Are you gonna be at the industry again? Jay, big amen, I'll look in that, Commissioner Doug.
No, I was gonna.
He's our newest guy. And you remember Cherry?
Cherry?
Welcome.